Good evening, I'm calling to order the Fairfax Town Council Special Meeting on Wednesday, August 9th, 2022. Michelle, will you call or we'll call, please?
It's Tuesday, I believe.
Oh.
You said Wednesday.
Well, the agenda says Wednesday, so I'm reading it.
Oh.
Oh, no. Okay, sorry about that. Yes, it is Tuesday. I'll amend that. And so, yes, roll call. Councilmember Ackerman.
Here.
Councilmember Goddard.
I'm here.
Councilmember Kohler.
Yeah.
Oh, no, the order just switched on my screen. Councilmember Kohler, okay. Vice Mayor Cutrano.
Present.
And Mayor Helman.
I am here.
All present, thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second. I heard motion, Cutrano, second, Goddard. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember Kohler.
Yes.
Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Goddard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cutrano.
Yes.
And Mayor Helman.
Yes.
All ayes, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, we have a pretty simple agenda this evening. One item, to appoint a council member to the Housing Element Ad Hoc Subcommittee to replace outgoing Councilmember Goddard. Heather, are you presenting on this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, as you mentioned, just a rather simple item. And then, so Councilmember Goddard no longer wishes to serve for the end of her term on this Subcommittee. And so now is your opportunity to pick another member to serve. And then, just as a convenience, we attached the schedule of meetings to this Agenda item. And so with that.
That schedule is not set in stone, though, that was.
That is a draft schedule, and that's why we marked it, as you see.
Draft, right. Okay, do we have any clarifying questions before I open the public comment?
Mayor, may I? It's a clarifying statement, actually. And then, thank you, Heather, for the staff report, but I just wanted to add that this is not just about my unwillingness to serve on this Subcommittee. I would love to serve on this Subcommittee. My term, as everyone knows, will end 15 or so minutes into the December regular council meeting. And so, as this will be slightly ongoing, it makes more sense, in my mind, that we appoint someone who can see it all the way through in whatever capacity the Subcommittee will work according to the Council's direction. So just wanted to add that clarification.
Thank you. Anyone else before I open the public comment? Okay, let's do that now, please.
Okay, let me turn the camera on for the timer. So we seem to have one raised hand for a public comment, and that is for timer. You're unmuted now.
Good evening, Council. I'd like to start by saying to Councilmember Goddard, thanks for all your help. It's been great, and we really appreciate it. But what I really want to talk about here is the continuity regarding the Housing Element. As the timeline has shown, this is going to go into 2023. And really, we have an election between now and then, and we also have the likelihood that Vice Mayor Cutrano is going to become mayor, which is going to give him a full plate. And so, in addition to that, our interim planning director has a cap of 960 hours, which could possibly be reached before the Housing Element is complete, which really leaves a, for the sake of continuity, just one single candidate here, which is Councilmember Ackerman. I do believe that the Housing Element is very closely tied to climate action and climate mitigation in this particular cycle because of the, besides housing for below median income and other aspects such as grid independence for PSPS and water availability and reduction of private trips. I would really like to balance, suggest that we balance out Councilmember Kohler, who's probably an extremely hardworking and extremely capable member of this committee with someone with the experience of having previously served on the General Plan Committee and the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, I'm going to close the open comment, public comment, rather, and bring it back to Council. Barbara?
Yeah, I think Bruce would be very well suited to the Housing Element. But one of the thoughts I had when I heard that we were going to be replacing someone on this is it might actually be a really great opportunity for Vice Mayor Cutrano to participate as the newest member of the Council and probably has more energy than everything on the Council combined. I'm kidding, who knows? I think he would bring a fresh eye to this, and also, you know, so I have a lot of the history and the background of being on the Council a long time, and I know his schedule is very booked. So I also know, having been mayor a couple of times, that while it does come with more responsibilities, it's not, and everybody can speak to their experiences differently, but I don't believe it's overwhelming. And I also see that Housing Element will be largely, it'll be at HCD for the 90-day public comment period before that switch happens. So I have more than respect for Councilmember Ackerman. That's why I really wanted him to be on the rest J, which was an important committee. But I think it might be nice to have some really new, fresh ideas as well. Not that Councilmember Ackerman doesn't have those as well. So just a couple of thoughts. Either way, I'm happy to work with whoever the Council decides is the best person to be on the Subcommittee.
Thank you, Barbara. I don't see who had their hand up first, I'm just gonna.
Councilmember Goddard didn't.
Okay, go ahead.
I think they kind of line up on the screen automatically, so it's kind of handy with the virtual hands. They, you can see the order.
You're on mute.
Yeah.
Got it. I actually wanted to back paddle one second because we've jumped into talking about who would best serve. But I would love to have just a brief explanation of what the duties of this Subcommittee are and how we see this working in tandem as we move through the Planning Commission's portion, the Council's portion, and where the public have the chance to participate in the process. So we don't have to go into an encyclopedia about this, but I would like to know what staff is foreseeing as the role of the Subcommittee.
You want me to take that, or do you want to take it?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
The original intent was just to be flexible and have a backup Subcommittee when we couldn't get to the full Council. And it really wasn't any kind of a specific plan for them. It was just to have a backup check-in kind of ability. So we did the back and forth about various drafts and different things that are going on just as a check-in kind of with the Council, a subset of the Council. But we don't really have a particular set plan for them, and I would like to maintain as much flexibility as possible because I think when we formed it originally, we didn't have any idea about the things that we're now thinking about they could do. And right now, sitting here, I have to imagine there could be additional things that would come up that I have no idea about right now. I don't know, David, if you have any, or Heather, if you have any additional thoughts about that. I think the major important thing on a Subcommittee is to keep it broad, keep it flexible, and let them be able to be a check-in for staff when we can't get to the full Council.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you. And I appreciate the comment, clarifying the roles of the Committee, too, for anybody jumps in. And I'm, yeah, I'm definitely interested in participating in that Subcommittee, in that capacity. Partially because, as one of the public commenter mentioned, if I did end up becoming mayor, I would want to have a really good handle on the process in the year ahead as we conclude the Housing Element process. So I feel like I'm very interested in understanding it intimately. And I am definitely interested. So I appreciate Councilmember Kohler's comments on my energy that I can bring to it. I definitely am committed to bringing a lot of energy to the process as needed. It sounds like it's potential check-ins or a sounding board and not like it's too overwhelming in terms of the amount of work or energy necessary for that Subcommittee. But I am, I'm definitely interested, and I just wanted to add one other thing related to the calendar, too, is in, you know, I respect the fact that a Subcommittee can expedite some parts of the process. One of the things that stood out to me in this particular calendar coming out, which is following Item 7 on the calendar, which is Community Meeting Number 3. I just know in my professional work, it's so vital for me in doing advocacy work or understanding CEQA processes or National Environmental processes, like NEPA processes, to understand the responses of commenters during a public comment period and how those comments are being collated, how those comments are being interpreted and responded to. And I think it would be very beneficial for the public at some point between that community workshop for the draft Housing Element and like the conclusion of the comment period, and when we wrap this thing up and send the draft Housing Element off with responses to HCD, I think it would be beneficial to have some opportunity for the public to understand how those comments were, what comments were received and how the towns and the consultants have responded to those comments before they're submitted. And I don't know, Janet or David, if you all could speak to whether or not that fits within the timeline that you're thinking. But I would also implore the Council to consider a special meeting if that is necessary, just to have that degree of public outreach and public communication around the public comment process. So just two things.
Yeah, so as you know, there's a 30-day public comment period. So we imagine that's starting the end of September, it's going to run through the end of October, right? For 30 days, and during that time, the public gets to comment. We write all the comments down, and we have to respond to all of them. And that is included, I think of it very much like responses to comments on an EIR. And, and so we have the comments and we have responses to them. And that package is what's going to go to HCD. Now, during that 30-day window, when the public is looking at it and making comments, you know, anybody's free to make any kind of comment they want. The responses to those comments, that whole package will be public. It is something that the public can see. What I'm concerned about, in a very tight timeframe, very tight timeframe, is the moment we finish and have that package finished, it would be really nice to get it off to HCD because it's late, as it is. And so when you see it going in November, that's late. But we want it to go as quickly as possible. So there, one of the things that concerns me in holding another public meeting is that the additional comments coming from that meeting. Are those comments then to be responded to and included? Where is this endpoint? So, you know, as with an EIR, you take comments whenever they come in, even though you have a set time for them to come in, we do tend to take them all. I would hate to have this not have an endpoint and not, you know, and get additional comments after we've done the responses and then have to do responses to those comments. And do you see what I'm concerned about here? I would like that package is done, it's public, people can see it. I'd like for it to go off to HCD as quickly as possible. That's my two cents worth. And I'm also.
Can I ask a question about number seven in this regard?
Yeah.
Number seven, there's no eight, I just want to note that. But number seven, what is that? What is the format of that discussion? Is that a focus group that's not a Brown, is it not constrained by the Brown Act? Or what is that exactly? When I see Q and A, I'm trying to understand the actual format as far as a community forum.
It's a noticed public meeting, it's a community meeting. It's usually, there's a presentation by the consultant, and it's to hear public comments. We can substitute in, instead of a community meeting, we could have a council meeting. So you could have a presentation by the consultant, I mean, it can be, it's a public meeting. And so, you know, you could look at that October regular meeting if you wanted to have a council meeting. I think I responded to you today and said, you know, you could do that.
I just feel strongly that the Council needs to review it before it goes to HCD. The draft goes to HCD.
Okay. But how is that different from everybody reviewing it, council, public, everybody, and it's public? So I'm not understanding the difference because when you say the Council.
Well, that's what I'm asking, what number seven is. What is, are you saying that the Council attends that community meeting? Provide, and when it says enable Q and A, can somebody elaborate on what that means?
I mean, you know, with a council meeting, how, when the public comments, you don't respond, right?
Right.
People make public comments, so you don't respond. And this is, a community meeting is more of an opportunity for some back and forth, maybe answering questions. When somebody comes and they have a question before they make a comment, there's an opportunity to answer those questions. The consultant is there, and the consultant is able to answer those questions. So, you know, it's a little bit different, but it can be, it can be much the same as a council meeting. You know, you don't, you don't respond to comments at a council meeting, but, you know, in Fairfax, you do. You can. We don't normally, but it's considered one-way flow of communication, but doesn't have to be. And so, you know, when you're talking about a community meeting, there's nothing magic about that. Nothing, nothing magic about that format at all. It's just an opportunity for people who maybe don't want to write their comments down to come and say them. We write them down. The consultant writes them down. Somebody's got to write it down. If the public doesn't want to put it in writing, they can come and say it, and we'll write it down, that's all.
What is the, what is the role of Fairfax Speaks at this point?
The website?
Is it going to be loaded onto the site for the public to send in their questions and comments?
The idea is that, yes, people can send in written comments via the web, website, yes, that's the idea.
In alignment with this?
Trying to provide multiple ways for people to comment.
Right.
Verbally, in writing, on the computer, sending them in, dropping them off at Town Hall.
And so I'm clear on number six, the Planning Commission Working Session. The outcomes of that, they do not feed into the draft?
That's odds, if you look at it, it says odds and inclusionary.
I thought that inclusionary policy would have been referenced in the Housing Element update. Is that not, there's not going to be, you wouldn't provide any commitment to that in the Housing Element update?
That's a separate track. It is, you know, if we have an inclusionary zoning, yes, it'll be mentioned in the Housing Element, but it isn't going to be in the Housing Element. It's going to be a separate zoning provision. Right? So when you see that Planning Commission, here, let me pull that up so I can see exactly what it's called. When you see number six, I think it is, Planning Commission Working Session, to be confirmed for September 28, they want a recommendation to the Council for odds and inclusionary. And so those are separate documents, they're not going to be in the Housing Element. But, and so that's kind of a separate track, so you see it there as number six. And I, I know it's confusing to put it right there because it looks like it's right in the middle of that track, but it's really a separate track.
But could we, by chance, screen share the timeline, please? Because if the public wants to go back and review this, they're not going to know what we're talking about.
Staff report.
Right, no, I understand, but people will watch the meeting, they won't go back. Thank you.
Can we go down a little bit there?
Yeah, did you scroll down a little bit? Thank you. I guess, I hear you, I guess I'm not totally clear on, you know, what content. I understand they're different documents, I get that, I just don't, I don't understand how this all fits together from a timing perspective, honestly.
We've got multiple things running on separate tracks, going through the same groups, coming at different times. And so it is not a linear line, it's multiple lines going at the same time, parallel tracks.
Let's say the Planning Commission recommendations out of number six, right? Doesn't Council need to weigh in and greenlight whatever?
That's a recommendation to the Council.
As far as what gets integrated, I know they're separate documents, but as far as what commitments or references are included in the draft Housing Element, doesn't Council need to weigh in on that and greenlight that?
So there's mention of those things in the Housing Element. They're not, that we have those, that they are separate things. But I'm not understanding your concern about.
So they are programs and policies that would be included in the Housing Element. So you have a list of programs and policies, and you would say, you know, commit to completing the objective development standards, commit to including the inclusionary. Those would be programs and policies. You wouldn't actually have the documents in there. Excuse me for interrupting, but we just had a session with the county that was pretty helpful. And I would just suggest, if you want to take Community Meeting Number 3 and make that the October 5th Council Meeting, with the beginning of it just being that community meeting. So maybe the mayor, et cetera, is not in charge of that meeting. Maybe the consultant and David are with the Q and A, and then there's a transcript. But it could take a long time, so you probably don't want to pack a lot of other things into the October 5th Council Meeting. So Community Meeting Number 3 could happen at the October 5th in the beginning, but it probably would take a few hours. So just one thing to throw out, and sorry for jumping ahead.
No, that's fine, I just, I just want to play that back. You're saying, not Item Number 3, you're saying Community Meeting Number 3, so number seven.
Correct, number seven.
You're saying, change that to a joint?
Yeah, what I would do is call it Community Meeting Number 3 for draft HE, and then say slash, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice, October 5th Council Meeting. But the way you set it up is that the first two hours, let's say, is that community meeting. And David leads that with our consultants, and there's Q and A, there's a transcript because all the comments have to be in writing. And, and we're participating as Council members, and often Council members can be, our questions can be first or whatever. But, and then we go into the regular October 5th meeting. But as I'm suggesting, you probably don't want to pack that October 5th Agenda because I think this community meeting could take two to three hours.
Yeah, okay.
Does that seem like sort of a good, a good idea? And the other thing about Item 6 that may be important, and David will have to probably look at this later or speak to it now, is that I think we would want to have the zoning work at least discussed at the Planning Commission in Item 6 because there will need to be regular zoning, not just the objective development standards. So that's just a side note. Anyway, if that's helpful, I'm not sure.
That is helpful, thank you. Bruce, you've had your hand up for a bit.
I just wanted to, that's a helpful conversation. I just wanted to add that in the the previous Housing Element that Jim Moore worked on, the, I believe, it was at the, pretty much at the end of the process to take one final look at the, at the final product to be sent to HCD, there was a joint meeting of Council, Planning Commission, and at that time, it was, I believe, GPIC, either G-PAC or GPIC at the time. So we, we had a quorum of each of those bodies, and it was a noticed joint meeting of each body. It was fairly quick, but it was just a chance for that body to, that group to all have a chance to, to basically give it our blessing as it was good to go. I don't know whether that really fits in with the purpose of the community meeting because the community meeting is more for taking community comments, and that's not, this was, what I'm referring to is kind of later in the game, when it was hoped to be done, and in fact, it was done. It was submitted as it was. And if I can go back to our earlier discussion of who might be on the Subcommittee to take the place of Renee and to work with Barbara, I have certainly given that thought, and I believe that Chance would do a great job. And my main concern was whether, Chance, you felt like. believe that Chance would do a great job. And my, my main concern was whether Chance, you felt like you had the, the time and energy for it because it's, doesn't look like it's going to be uh, meeting every other day, but it's going to be, you know, it's going to be a fair amount of attention. But you've indicated that you are anxious to do it. And so I just wanted to, to say. And also it, with regard to my experience on the housing element, for what it's worth, the housing element, I have, I worked for, for quite a number of years on GPAC and, and chaired GPAC, uh, working on the general plan. But the housing element is kind of separate from the rest of the general plan. So on GPAC, we didn't really work on the housing element. And when the housing element came around to that Rena cycle, we weren't the lead group working on it. It was really led by our planning director at that time, Jim Moore. And of course, planning commission and council. So, um, just to say, I was involved with it. I was following it, but it's not like, in the position I was in, I had a, you know, special uh, responsibility for it. So anyway, I would be happy to see Chance take that on.
Thank you, Bruce. Vice Mayor, I see your hand up.
Yeah. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Ackerman, um, for, uh, for your words. And, um, I think you'd be a great fit too. I, I am, I am interested, um, as well. So what, whatever works. I also just in your, your first comment about that step after the community meeting, or whatever we want to call it. If it's October 5th council meeting, cool. Um, but I, I do think, uh, it could be valuable and I to, to have a, a final check-in before we send it off, just for the full council to see it or to see the responses and for the public. And I, Janet, I, I totally hear your comment. My, my understanding is until we, you know, certify the EIR finalized the process, like the administrative record is, is open and there are always going to be comments that technically are coming in. And, you know, even, even after we close the comment period, there are going to be comments that people send in. So I don't know what the difference would be if somebody sends those in in writing, uh, after they missed the close of the comment period, or if they just share their perspective on, um, you know, our, our responses from the comment period at, you know, the, the first meeting, the beginning of November, uh, for a, a brief presentation. That's, you know, 30 minutes or whatever it is, that just is an overview of here's the process to date. We're about to send this off. The, the subcommittees met, the responses have been collated. Here's everything that we received. Here is what we've responded. And, um, that sort of blessing, uh, idea that Councilmember Ackerman just referred to. Um, I, I still think that there's, uh, an advantage for the, for the public and for the council to just have that oversight before it's sent off. Um, and, and so.
Are you suggesting this as an and in addition to what Councilmember Kohler offered or?
Yeah, I am. I'm, I'm saying, I'm saying that, um, I think there's a reason why there's a missing number eight here. And it's because we actually have to put a number eight in with something else, uh, which would be another, one more check-in uh, after the community meeting and after we close the public comment. Um, and it could be that the housing element subcommittee meets early November before the regular town council meeting and to review comments. Um, but I, it just, there's, I have a gut feeling that it would, the best process would be to have a brief review, um, after we conclude the comment period before we send off the draft housing element with comments and responses to HCD.
I just want to be super clear. So number seven, but what Barbara was suggesting is what I heard was a combined community meeting and council meeting.
Right.
And then, and then you, you're suggesting yes to that or separate those?
I'm sit like, I, I'm kind of agnostic about the, I think the point of the community meeting is to get as many comments as possible during the 30-day public comment period. And that's just one way to do it. And it could be done at a council meeting. It could be done at a special community workshop. Maybe my personal preference would be separate it, have a standalone community workshop, promote the heck out of it and save us some time to actually take action on some things in October, um, if, if we need to. I know there, there are other like projects that we're working on in the town. So I don't want it to be a three-hour town council meeting. That's just a community workshop. But the, what I'm, what I'm referring to is after that process is complete, after all the comments are received, we have to create responses, um, to those comments before we send everything off to HCD. And I think it would be good for the council and the public to see that final product with it, with the responses, um, that we send off to the state.
So that comes in between nine and 10?
Yeah. I think a couple of people have their hands up.
Sorry. I, I have my, it's the full screen, so I don't see everything. Sorry.
Doesn't it come between seven and eight? I'm sorry.
It, I, I mean, it, it might make sense for, it might make sense for it to come after number nine and like have the housing element subcommittee check in, but maybe not. Maybe it, maybe it does make sense to come in at eight. I, I'm agnostic about that.
No, it would come in after nine if it comes in. I'm just concerned about, um, if we keep adding more meetings, we're going to have to pay EMC more. That's another, that's one thing we think about.
Hang on a second. We had eight meetings in that contract and I don't know that we've, I haven't seen.
This is only the beginning of it. I mean, we're not. If we, I, I, I'm just saying, I expect there will be a request for additional compensation. Just, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that you can't object to that, obviously. I'm just saying expected. And then I think also what I'm concerned about is that, um, the point of having a council meeting where the council can comment on a draft before it goes off to HCD would be to say, well, we need to tweak this, we need to fix that, we need to change that. There'll be further changes. And if there are further changes, that will delay getting it off to HCD. That's my concern. Because otherwise it's a public document and everybody can see it. But the point of having a council meeting is to have a forum where you can have a majority of the council, three members. Uh, because, you know, if individuals want different things, that's not three members of the council. It's not the council as a whole. You will have a forum where a council as a whole can make additional changes, which will require additional work, which will require delay getting it off to HCD. That's a concern. I mean, that's the, that's the point of having a, you know, a check-in with the subcommittee there at nine. Say, this is what we needs to go off. It's not by any stretch of the imagination a final. It's just going as the preliminary submittal to HCD. I mean, there's going to be continued work on it even after we get it back from HCD. And so I'm, I'm just a little concerned about treating that like a final product that needs a final sign-off because it's, it's just not. But.
But Janet, we don't have the opportunity in this schedule. It's going to ship off to HCD without counsel.
That's why you have a subcommittee.
Well, yeah, okay. Noted. Your concerns are noted. Um, who else has their hand up? Bruce, did you want to speak again?
Well, yeah, I, um, I guess I want to second what Janet is saying. Uh, there's, much as we would like to talk about this forever, I'm sure we would all love to. There, there has to be a point at, and the public is seeing what's going on at all times. So there's going to have to be a point at which something gets put in the mail or the virtual mail and sent to HCD. And as Janet said, this is a draft still. This is our first submittal to HCD, but there has to be a point at which we took the last round of comments. And if there were changes that came out of those comments, those changes were made and then it gets sent. It can't, the last step can't be right before it's sent to say, and is there anything, anybody would like to change? Because then there has to be a process to change it. And then that triggers another round of, is there anything that anybody would like to change? We, they're just, I, I'm really hearing what Janet is saying and I, and I agree with it, that um, this is, that it, it has to get sent and there are deadlines for that. Um, I'm less concerned with paying, uh, our consultants, uh, extra, even though I hate to spend the money, but I'm, but I'm definitely concerned with, uh, with us just having an unrealistic idea of the schedule that says that we can talk endlessly about it until everybody's done talking because historically we've.
I'd like to understand why we don't have a schedule when we all asked for a schedule from our consultants and we committed to paying up to eight meetings. I'm not, I, I mean, go ahead. Thank you, Bruce. Go ahead, Barbara.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, um, a couple of things just to know, um, I'm glad you're keeping track of the meetings, but for example, we just did a meeting with the county and Andy was on. So that was a meeting. There are meetings that we may not be a party to as the council. Um.
Not paying for those. We have a contract, we've contractually agreed to up to eight meetings. And now I'm hearing we might have to pay for more when we haven't even had one since the last time.
Well, I, I don't know. I'm not arguing about that. Um, I'd just like to say, so I was also present at the last housing element. And one of the differences in this housing element is now there is this requirement for this 30-day public comment with responsiveness summary. That did not exist. Also, the out of, you know, out of this world Rena numbers did not exist. Our last Rena was 61 plus the ones that we didn't make from the previous cycle. So it came to 141. So, um, I want to also point out, um, I found out that pretty much everybody else in the county, including the county, is going to make the September 15th date to send in their public review drafts to HCD. So we are the outliers with a pretty long schedule. Um, also, as I pointed out, the last meeting, as far as I know, we're the only ones in the county with the conditional certification on the fifth, um, fifth cycle. So I think we're sort of hanging out like a little bit of a sore thumb. I think, um, the last meeting, last time when we had that meeting, it was during the day. It was sitting around at a table with the planning commission, some of them and some of the council. And it was just a quickie. We've already seen that every time we talk about this housing element, with the exception of this meeting, because I think it's special, is we get lots and lots of comments. Now, I think there might be a way to say, um, the end of the public comment period is October 27th. No further comments will be accepted. Period. So if you all very much insist on having another meeting with the council, and I'm not sure why the council meetings are so critical, um, I don't know if there's magic about them, but, um, and if we don't provide more comments like Bruce says, when is the end? We are really, really late. And by adding another council meeting, we're probably looking at end of November to get the draft to HCD. And so, um, not very good. Um, I would suggest that we really focus on that community meeting. And, uh, maybe one of the, maybe an alternate between nine and 10, when we're ready to send that thing off. Is we have a write-up, maybe the newsletter is not the right forum, but something like the newsletter to say, um, generally here's our comments were addressed. Any changes from the draft that had been seen prior. Significant changes. Maybe that's a way, but, um, just a couple of ideas.
Mayor, may, may I speak?
Sure.
Thanks. Um, yeah. And I, I appreciate those suggestions and I, um, I totally hear the both from Councilmember Ackerman and Councilmember Kohler, the, the concern about the timeline. Obviously we're behind. Uh, for me, it's, I, I'm not particularly swayed by whether or not other municipalities in the county are rushing to submit their plan. I personally think that based on the amount of rejection we've seen in SoCal for their housing element update process, like I don't think rushing through the process is going to demonstrate that there's community buy-in and that everybody's going to produce a, you know, achievable housing element. On the contrary, I think, you know, if we can generally meet the, the timeline, then showing in addition to that, that we're actually trying to have a, a really transparent and accountable public process is going to be better for the community and better for HCD. And I think the community is already, you know, generally concerned about Rena and the housing element process and all these numbers. And so we, if we do want to have community buy-in to a transparent process and an accountable process, it feels like we, we shouldn't make the public comment portion, just this sort of performative thing where you submit your comments. We'll respond to them. You won't see the responses yet, but trust us, we'll respond to them eloquently and satisfactorily. And then we're going to send this thing off because we're time-bound. I, I think we, if we can commit as a council to not coming to a meeting and like talk, you know, talking about the, that product, you know, at length. Um, and if, as Councilmember Kohler mentioned, like we can be very clear about the fact that the comment period is closed. And this is just an opportunity for everybody in the community to see the responses and the final thing we will be sending to the state. I, I feel like, uh, it doesn't have to be long. And I feel like it is a prudent approach to bringing the community through what, what feels like a, a sort of tense process. I mean, the housing element process is, it does, it, it's always been tense, but it's, uh, even more so this year. There's a lot on the line here. So that's, that's why I'm so uh, concerned about it or just being, and pressing the issue. I, I don't mean to belabor it, um, but it just feels important. Thanks.
I see Janet waving her hand.
Thank you. I'm still only seeing one box at a time. Go ahead, Janet.
Sorry about that. See this pineapple thing in my background? It's the same color as the hand. So when I put my hand up, it's hard to see that, isn't it? Anyway, um, so I just wanted to go back to something you said, Stephanie, the eight meetings, you know, that's not eight council meetings. That's eight meetings. So whenever EMC gets present at like the county meeting or planning commission meeting, all these other, those are all meetings they get paid for. Those go.
Why are we paying for a meeting that they're presenting to the county?
They're participating there. They, they don't do it for free. I mean, they are helping further the housing element.
That was on the topic of Fairfax?
It was part of the housing. Barbara? Can you tell us what that meeting was? Um, Barbara, you're muted.
Uh, the meeting we just had was with David. Renee couldn't participate because of her family situation. Uh, David, Liz Darby from the county, Jillian Zeiger from the county, Andy, David Weltering. And that was specifically to go over how the county can help us with the affirmatively furthering fair housing. So we do have the right policies and we, uh, get the review that the county can do on our sites uh, to make sure they fit with the data. That was specific to Fairfax. And every time, and just want to just say one more thing. The county also has meetings with the planning directors and the consultants. And I don't know how frequently they are, but they're. And I don't know how frequently they are, but they're at least once a month. And those meetings are specifically to assist on how, it's not just a general meeting on housing elements. They're specific on, you know, how you can get to the finish line. Here's the tools that we have. So when Andy participates in those, that is a meeting.
Okay, well, that was made clear to me. Thank you. I appreciate that. And it sounds like a valuable meeting. But every time he's there, AMC is meeting with staff, it should not be considered one of those eight meetings.
Madam Mayor, may I speak momentarily just to clarify because I just pulled up the the contract. And in the actual uh memorandum that we agreed upon at the May special meeting, um, it does say specifically that they anticipated up to eight additional planning commission and town council meetings will be necessary to complete the project, not just eight meetings with random stakeholders. They do go on to say that there are going to be other types of meetings, uh, up to six additional committee and commission commission meetings will be necessary along with. They go on to say sixty-five hours of staff time for different meetings that they need to participate in, legal meetings. Nine meetings with legal staff are anticipated, but I just wanted to clarify for the record, you are correct, Mayor. It was eight planning commission and town councils meetings specifically.
That's what I recall, and we've had, we've had one since then.
Okay, but if we're taking that public uh community meeting number three and making that a council meeting, that's going to count. If we add in a number eight or something after nine down here, another council meeting, that's going to count as well. And this is the, that has to stretch through the entire, all the way to the end. And there are going to be a lot more meetings in twenty-three um, than we've seen in twenty-two, because when we get down to the end of it, that's when we're going to have a lot more meetings. So I'm just concerned that we're eating into what we have already committed to. And that's going to cause them to come back to us and say, well, that needs to increase now. I'm not saying you can't object. Obviously, you can. I just know how consultants work, and if we start adding additional council meetings even, we're going to hear about it. That's all.
You know, I I may I, Mayor?
Sure.
I I, it might be whoofus to get a little clarity from our consultant because I feel as though we're painting consultants in a very poor light here. Um, I and I also think that we um, we haven't been clear because I know as a member of the Affordable Housing Committee that we had three meetings with them. And there were a lot of meetings with subcommittees. They met with Open Space. They met with ResJ. They met. But I'm not quite sure that that's what we bargained for. So I think it's going to be really important to circle back and get some real clarity from them so that twenty-twenty-three doesn't come around and we have, you know, uh, there will be a lot more meetings. But I'm not quite sure that anyone asked that they meet with every one of our boards and commissions, besides the planning commission, obviously, Affordable Housing and the council. So I just hope that at a staff level.
Yeah, that was in the first phase of the contract. Remember, then we renewed it and that eight meetings was in that recent May signing that.
That was an additional? Is is that what, is that, is that what you're explaining?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we were cool with those beginning ones because it's starting to look like.
Yeah, I, we wanted that stakeholder input. I I recall. I mean, yeah, we encouraged that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't part of the calculation.
No.
Okay.
It's all post, you know, May forward and we, as I said, we've been asking for a schedule because I've had that eight in my mind, like, when is this magical eight going to get scheduled, you know? A- anyway, I think we're.
Okay.
Worse here. Um, so I I concur with Vice Mayor. I'd like to see it uh before we send it off, as I've said in the beginning. I'm a little confused as far as Barbara, your your latest suggestion. I I don't know that I could play that back. Um.
So to have something in writing, was that what you suggested, Councilmember Kohler?
Yeah, I figured we could do something in writing as to any changes we made that were significant and um, you know, the responsiveness summary would be attached. So we could, you know, do a link to that. I mean, it doesn't sound like you like that, but I'm repeating it because I was asked to repeat it. Um, I think you're going to have to think about, um, you know, I'm a consultant to Renee and we're spending a lot of money on this consultant and they came back in absence for a lot of money. So, um, I'm concerned that every time we talk to them, the clock is ticking. And um, I don't know that we've always gotten, you know, some of that early work. I'm not sure where it went. It may have been good outreach, but I'm not sure what happened with it. But, um, you know, I think we ought to wrap this up at some point. You know, I'm not an advocate for doing two council meetings on this, but I'm not, you know, I get the sense uh, Vice Mayor and Mayor are, so I'm not sure.
I I'm I'm personally to keep community meeting number three as is and just to have a follow-up coming out of that public comment period. Um, and after, you know, the subcommittee meets and whatever, but I I'm happy with it being a a council meeting between nine and ten and keeping the community meeting the same. If that's, if if folks are amenable to that, or Mayor, if you're amenable to that, but.
Yeah, I support that. Bruce, so I see, did you just put your hand down?
Um, I was, I was going to make a motion to uh with regard to appointing uh Councilmember Catrano, but we can finish this discussion if we possibly can. Yeah.
I just had one last question. Um, but so oh, sorry. In terms of having a hard stop on the public, um, on the comment and then responses, um, as Janet and then Vice Mayor was saying, can we, can we actually add that? Because that will take care of some of the constant new comments and new responses required. Um, is that something we can do? Just put a, put a hard stop on that?
I mean, we're supposed to take comments when comments come in. We're supposed to take them all. You know, you can, you can say the end of the comment period is next, but um, we can't refuse any comments, you know.
But the thirty-day, the mandate is a thirty-day comment period, correct?
Right, yeah. You need to at least have that. So you have that.
But you can't refuse comments, but you can say that the time has come when the comments, that we're not making any more changes.
Right, we we record them. We keep them. We write them down if they come in, you know, verbally. They have to, they have to be kept and addressed at some point in time. Um, and so you can't choose them and you can't say, no, we can't make any more comments. We're done. And somebody says, well, wait, I just now found out about this. I didn't know about it. It just now got involved, you know? Why won't you take my comment? We can't do that. We have to take all comments. So.
Janet, let me ask you something. I'm thinking about this like a cleanup plan. And that I've done in this state. Uh, thirty-day public comment period. And the administrative record for that document is anything you relied upon or used to make decisions for that document. Those are hard stops on those public comment periods. And then the document is finalized with the responsiveness summary. And that's that. Now, the difference we have here is that our EIR won't be finalized until after that period has you know, let's say we make a hard stop and we say, this is the administrative record for the public review document, okay? Then we're going to get comments back from um, HCD within ninety days, hopefully, if everything goes well. But if our EIR is not finalized until February or something like that, does that leave the administrative record still hanging for that document?
Um, I do not think about this being finished and being completely done until uh you've certified this. Uh, you've approved this, the EIR has been certified. You can't do the housing element until you have the EIR. And people can comment. Now, what they're commenting on is, may change. I don't think it's going to change drastically. Uh, I think this is, uh, I think you're going to be surprised when you see really that it's not going to change in really substantive ways because all the work that's been done up to this point has been structuring, you know, building the structure. And once we have the structure, we can't take, you know, one leg away from the table.
Okay, but let's go back. Okay, so let's say we make a hard stop. Let's say it's October twenty-seventh. Do our responsiveness summary. We make whatever changes are needed in that document. And we do, and the subcommittee meets, and the subcommittee isn't just a check-in. The subcommittee is working on that. You know, it's real roll up your sleeves kind of stuff. Then we do a check-in. But the comment period has ended for that draft document. Now, that doesn't mean that people at that check-in, which is between nine and ten. It doesn't mean that people can't provide comments and we can collect those comments. And we can say later we'll do an FAQ or something like that. But is it possible? And I think the other piece is the council. If we do a check-in with the council and the counts, you know, one council member says, hey, I want this drastically changed. I mean, that's going to happen at that check-in as well. So I'm just wondering, let's assume that's not going to happen. And that uh the council will rely on the good wishes and the good work of the subcommittee to do the best we can to think about what our colleagues would want. But um, could we make that a hard stop? That's it. Was just a check-in. See, is there anything glaring, any critical flaws laying out there? And then any comments we receive at that meeting becomes things that are responded to in an FAQ. They may be very similar to a lot of the comments we got during the public comment period. Is there any way to do that?
Well, the only, yes, the only thing I want to say is there are two things. Number one, the responses to comments will be done by the consultant. I mean, when you said that the the subcommittee is actually going to be working on that, I don't I don't think the subcommittee is meant to work on a response to comment.
No, but we will be seeing those response to comments and seeing if they make sense.
Yes, yes, but that's what we're paying the consultant for. And the second thing is, as long as we don't refuse to take comments, we have to take whatever comes and we have to record them. And so we can't refuse to take somebody's comment. We can't tell somebody, no, can't comment anymore. It's over. It's done. You can't comment anymore. We we are taking comments all the time, constantly. What they're commenting on um, is going to change through the process, right? So when somebody makes a comment in October, that may not be this, that may not be the same thing that they would have a comment on in February. So it it will change and shift a little bit, but what I mean about the structure being built is I think, for example, um, you know, we had to get, in order to do the EIR, we had to get the sites nailed down. And we had to decide, you know, what the numbers on the sites. And that has to be done in order to do the EIR. And so we've done that. And so uh comments about, oh, there's too many on this or too, you know, too few on that. That's great. We'll take that comment. Um, but as far as changing anything, it really can't at this point.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Can we just? It's just a check-in at that point, and even though we'll accept comments, we're not going to be changing the document. Can we do that? And we can accept subsequent comments. So if we can do that, then I think having that check-in meeting, which is not my favorite idea, between nine and ten. And we may have to do it as a special meeting because I think the meeting in November is November second.
That'll be too soon. They won't have anything finished by.
Right, so we would have to do a special meeting in November and everybody has to commit to doing that.
And the other thing too is one council member can say whatever they want, but remember, it does take three to give direction.
Well, I think if if one of the things we try to do is control ourselves from changing direction.
But like you said, Barbara, if there was a glaring omission or something, there would be opportunity to make a.
Yeah, I think if there's a glaring omission. But but I think we, you know, I know we're not always the most disciplined, but I think to the extent we can be disciplined, and it's really like that Mill Valley meeting where the mayor went over over every program and policy and said, Sashi, what do you think? And it was either, yep. Um, I think there was only like maybe a couple of things that somebody said, ooh, I'd like to see that a little different, and they were specific. So if we can be disciplined like that and not spend a lot of time waxing poetic over new ideas, that would be um the best way to do it.
I'm in favor of that.
And would it be an action? It would be an action to approve the the draft?
Yes.
Good. I'm in favor of that. Does someone want to make a motion?
Why don't we let Bruce make his motion about the subcommittee first?
Unless we can do it together, whatever.
I think Michelle likes them separate.
Let's, let staff speak.
You can make two separate motions or one motion together, however you like.
Okay, Bruce, I'll leave it to you.
Well, I I'll make a motion, um, the simple motion. I'll appoint, I would move to appoint uh Councilmember Catrano to serve with Councilmember Kohler on the council subcommittee to work with the housing element as described in this in this timeline and the discussion we just had. And with thanks to both of these council members for your willingness to serve. This is truly public service.
I'll second that.
Would you like a roll call vote?
Yes, please.
Councilmember, um, Goddard, uh, Kohler?
Yes.
Councilmember Goddard?
Yes.
Councilmember Ackerman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Catrano?
Yes, with much gratitude to y'all.
And Mayor Hellman?
Yes, thank you. Vice Mayor, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm happy to um make a motion to um add one additional um check-in after uh item nine on the draft town of Fairfax Housing Element Update Project Timeline. Um, to have one more, yeah, check-in meeting at the, at a council meeting following the, following item nine uh where we approve the draft housing element with comments and responses to be submitted to the State Department of Housing and Community Development.
I'll second that again.
Okay.
Michelle, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor. Councilmember Kohler?
Yes.
Councilmember Ackerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Goddard?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Catrano?
Yes.
And Mayor Hellman?
Yes.
All eyes.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate that.
I I I need to ask a follow-up question, a general question about this process, if I may. Um, because I think it's really. Um, because I think it's really important that we all hear this at once from our legal counsel. Um, I, I know that historically, um, I've been working with, uh, Councilmember Kohler as a Brown Act team on this. And I, I think others have got the person that they've worked with. So in this case, um, where now the Vice Mayor will be working with, um, Councilmember, are we to move forward, um, with these new configurations, if you will, um, so that, uh, we start from here? Yes. I see a nod.
Start from here. This is the subcommittee. Catrano and Kohler are the subcommittee now.
Right, I understand that, but we have, um, been working.
Chance and I were on a subcommittee for engaging the community with EMC. We haven't met in a while for obvious reasons, but. So we disband that one.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, the subcommittee has, um, a scope, so I'm not sure exactly where your concern is because I don't think that, for example, if you wish to have conversations about the housing element, you can do so because the subcommittee is moving on with the new things that you would not be part of that conversation. Is that what your concern is?
Uh, you know, I don't want to go into the weeds here. I just want to make sure that we're all clear, um, about what we can and cannot do proceeding in the configurations were different prior to this new appointment to the subcommittee.
Yeah, it's a good.
If you call me, then we can talk about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just have one follow-up, which is, can we say that that special meeting is the second Wednesday? Um, let's just get it done, uh, which I think might be the 16th. I'm not sure. I think the November meeting is the second. But let's just.
If I'm, if I may, let's do the scheduling separate because, um, I think there's some other things that are going to come into play on the, on the scheduling of that.
Okay, the one thing we have to know is I believe the following week is Thanksgiving. So, let's, uh.
So Barbara, you're thinking, we're saying two meetings in November and likely the first half of November.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I know, I'm just expressing.
That's what I'm saying because I just don't want Michelle to have to go through the.
It's a very fine idea.
Um, I'm not available the second Wednesday in November. I have another, um, meeting that, on the second Wednesday always. And I think we can try and, um, move this as quickly as we can to try to get it, um, to HCD as soon as possible. Um, so I think that there are other things that are going to go into scheduling that it's not going to be, um, I don't want to cast anything in concrete right now.
We also have a fire board meeting that second Wednesday.
Okay, well, let's, let's get this scheduled right away. Um, Janet, talk to Michelle. Let's get this firmed up because otherwise I'm hearing December.
No, 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 no. Yeah, no, we're talking.
Well, we've got to remember about Thanksgiving, so let's get it firmed up and not make Michelle's life miserable trying to schedule five meetings.
Right.
Please, thank you.
Okay.
I think we are ready to adjourn. Oh, there was.
Close session, public comment.
Pardon me?
Close session.
Public comment for the closed session.
Don't I adjourn this meeting first?
No, oh, yes.
Okay.
Before we adjourn to the closed session, you want to take public comment on the closed session.
Right.
I was asking if I close this special meeting first. It sounds like no.
No, because you want it, you want to, uh, open so you can take public comments.
Okay, I'm going to open public comments for the closed session.
So if there are any members of the public who wish to comment on the closed session matter listed on the agenda, please raise your hands. And I see no raised hands, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I will close public comment on the closed session and we will adjourn to the closed meeting.
Do, do we want to note that the, um, report out on the closed session will be at the next council meeting in September? September 7th, regular council meeting, you'll report out on the closed session you're about to adjourn to.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.